We'll go ahead and get this started. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening to this town hall meeting to discuss the possibility and get some community input for the youth resident facility. It's been suggested that we possibly put into this facility. Again, like I said, thank you for all, everybody coming out. Just some opening comments. You have the timeline, you have the agenda. We'll probably skip around in the agenda just a little bit. But on the timeline, it's just a simple timeline because that was one question that came out of the last town hall meeting is what is the timeline? Of course, tonight, it's the first item being this meeting. The council has a final decision with community input whether to lease the building for this purpose. And then after that, it is up to individuals from the community to put together the board, the director, the nonprofit, fundraising, renovation, and employees licensing from the state. The city, once this lease is done, the city's obligation will be complete. So there was some concern that it was going to be bleeding the city tax dollars, and it will not. So with that, we will get started. We're going to go ahead and start with Tammy to she and several other community members went and toured a facility similar to this, Youth Horizons in Valley Center, and she's going to discuss that and answer some of the questions that came from that. Hand it off to Tammy.
Well, we went to the Youth Horizon and it was, it was a very, I don't think, kind of experience because there's, what, three houses and there are four houses and they're huge and they house seven to eight boys in each home. And fortunately, these boys, I got to talk to them because I wanted to find out what was going on, if they liked the facilities, what was, you know, the basic rules, things like that. And these kids all talked and they were very, very pleasant to speak with. So, yeah, Paul Kendall, where are you?
He's gone.
Come up here. Because the facility had a computer room where the kids, some of the kids went ahead and took online classes, others went to school, some of the kids had jobs outside of the home, other kids, you know, had more restrictions. But it was, the way they had it set up, it was wonderful. And the training that those individuals have, they told us what they had to go through and it was amazing what their staff goes through to make sure it's a good environment for all of the children. So I'll let you tell your part of it. Everybody had something different that they went all over.
I don't know what I can tell you about it. It's, they have four big homes there and the rooms are just basically a dresser and a bed because all their living is going out into a living area. Their meals are at a, in a dining room. The kitchen is right up to date kitchen. They have a, one fellow, he's, he's quite a cook and he takes over the kitchen and he's also the big, I call him a referee if they need him. He's the house father. There's a little place of joint in it. Kids stay in the, in the house. They have the seven rooms, bedrooms. They really have eight, but they have one that they keep in each one of the houses because sometimes some of the kids come from Valley Center or Wichita because they're, they may be foster kids and their foster parents may need a little respite every once in a while. So they may come in and stay just a day or two or whatever. They, everything there is, kind of sits out in the country, so it's a little farm problem. They got chickens, the kids, each, each have their own chore to go do. They have a, one room that's got, or one building that's got a computer room in it where each kid sets their own computer and, and most of them do online schooling. I don't like the 21st century that was here now in Greensburg. There are, I think, two or three of them that went to go into Valley Center to, to school. Both of them are right there doing the same work as, as a school. It was a pretty nice place. When this is in the shabbal house that they're living in, they, they bill them, I think they're, they said they were $4 million apiece to make these, 1.2. It's, it's pretty nice. They can, I'd say, they have their own budget there. Everything's run, run out of that budget, just like the city's budget, so. But everything is pretty paid for and they make, they do make a little bit of money. They, I think, they told us since 1980 something, they've never had a year that they didn't get in the black, so. Because the state pays so much per day to house these kids, there's such a lack of rooms that they, they have to have some, someplace to get them in there. I was looking today at, down at Kiowa, there's another place down there called Freedom Gates, Boys Ranch and the, most of them are, and like Freedom's Gate, it's got a little religious flavor to them and they keep them that way because kind of needs a little bit of that in your, your life. The kids are all treated real well. Said sometimes the one might decide that that's not what they want and, well, that happens in every family, I guess. These are, these are really family kids and their father takes, their father, their house parent takes care of them. It was a pretty nice, pretty nice thing. Took about six or eight of us, took a tour and listened to all the kids and you got bad with them, just like your own kids, so. And knowing me as, there's a foster kid in my family right now, sometimes you have to tell them that, you know, here's the way we're going to do things, so. It's different, so. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody's got now or later, whatever. You're all turned on. Where do you?
Yeah, you can go.
Well, the next speaker is Veronica from DCF and she's going to tell us about the need for this project, so let you.
No, I don't want to, but I will.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Veronica Romero from the Department for Children and Families. I am the licensing surveyor for Kiowa County, so that means I cover all foster homes and all facilities in this county and I have 12 counties, I think, I cover currently. The need for foster homes is so huge right now. I mean, I know everybody's probably, most everybody's probably heard in the media, kids are sleeping in offices, in the agency offices and things like that because there are not foster homes in southwest Kansas. That is true. That is true. They are actually sleeping in some of the offices. And also, the age range for all of these children is zero to 18. I mean, they're from all walks of life, all ages, all creeds, all colors, all cultures. There just are not enough foster homes at all. So Jim contacted me about this little venture. I was all for it. I mean, we need it in southwest Kansas. Our kids that are being pulled out of homes in our area are being shipped to Wichita, they're being shipped to Norton, Kansas City, I mean, all over the state, but not here. And that makes getting visitations with their parents really, really difficult. You've got to transport children three hours for an hour visit and then transport them three hours back. That's a huge, huge, huge trauma for these kids. I mean, they've already traumatized enough. They're traumatized again when they're taken from their family and then they got to go through this all over again. So we really need it. We really, really need this.
Veronica, if I can inject, as she commented at the workshop, the mindset of western Kansas, because I live outside of Wichita, but the mindset and the values are different in western Kansas, having grown up here, than they are in Wichita anymore. You wouldn't think so because we're all Kenyans, but it does make a difference, folks.
It makes a huge, huge difference.
The closer we can keep, if we do this, if y'all do this, it's going to be a great service for the kids because they're going to be familiar with the lifestyle, if you will, more than if they're in a more metropolis area.
Correct. That's absolutely correct. I mean, you can take, pull a kid out of Mollville, Kansas and put him in Kansas City, they're going to freak out. And it happens every single day with all of them.
I'm sorry, everybody just can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need a microphone.
I mean, that's what I got.
Yeah, but they really want to hear you so they can then read.
What is it that you didn't hear?
You're going to have to use a microphone.
Use a microphone.
Okay.
It won't light you.
Okay, I was just, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
It should be on.
It is on? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Now? Okay. I was just talking about the need of beds in southwest Kansas.
There, that's my better.
Okay, we just don't, we don't have enough beds in southwest Kansas. Our kids are getting taken from here and placed on the other side of the state. And one of the, one of the biggest problems with that is getting the visitations with their family because the goal is always reintegration unless it's so severe that, that they can't be placed back in the home. But getting those visits, you know, you have to transport kids three hours for an hour visit and transport them again three hours back home or back to their placement, which is, which is why, like I said, when Jim contacted me about this little adventure here, I was all for it. And like I've told him and I've told your mayor and I've talked to Tammy, I am here for you guys and I, I am going to be on this project from the beginning, so if you have questions about anything, you can always contact me, just like the, the floor plan. If there's construction that needs to be done, I can be contacted, I can come out and look and make sure it's within the guidelines, within the regulations, so. And I told them that I am going to be here. This is my first opportunity to license a facility. I've licensed all kinds of foster homes, but I've not licensed a facility yet and I was really looking forward to doing this with you guys if you go ahead and decide this is what you want for your community, so.
And you said zero to 18.
Zero to 18 are, the kid, the age range for kids in foster care is zero to 18, like from two days after they're born all the way up until, well, sometimes even up into the age of 21. It just, you know, depends on what that child needs, so.
Her residential youth facility will have, what, age 12 to 18 perhaps?
The facilities I cover are 10 to 18, so you can go to 10, you can do whatever you want as long as it's within the regulations if you're going to take state kids, so.
But they, they can set a age limit of what they want.
Right.
So if they say, let's say 13 to 18.
Right. If that's all you want, that's all you have to take. You don't have to take anything outside of that age range, so. And nobody can tell you different, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Veronica, she has to stay within her scope of her job, so there's some questions she might be able to answer, others she might not. Has anyone got anything for her?
If we do go with the younger kids, they'll have to hire somebody to come in and take care of them during the day?
There should be somebody on staff 24 hours a day.
24 hours, oh, 24 hours a day.
Yes. You're going to have three shifts probably.
Okay.
So, because they, all, they have to be supervised 24, I mean, they, they have to be supervised all the time.
Okay.
So that's just part of the, part of the regulations.
So if there's younger children, does that mean we need more house parents, kind of like, you know, how the daycares or licenses?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And stuff like that?
Yes, I think, and I don't know about younger children because I only work with the older ones in my facilities that I have, but for, for seven children, you have to have one staff member. I personally don't think that's enough, but that's what the regulation says. And I mean, I've done that work before myself, so I know one person just isn't enough for seven teenagers. It's not enough.
How many students would be housed here and how many would be possible?
That's for you guys to decide.
Okay, well, I mean, the size of the rooms and stuff like that.
I think you guys were talking about eventually having 30 beds?
Possibility.
Up to.
Up to 30?
You got to have, if you have, not to take away, per regulation, if you have a private bedroom per child, which is highly recommended both by the state and by those who have it, you got to have eighty square feet in a bed, essentially, but ten, however you figure.
Yeah.
So then you have to have two assets, okay? So those regulations come into play, but you got to have a place for house parents to stay.
That's only if you have.
That's what you're looking up there.
That's only if you have someone that actually lives in the facility, so.
Well, yeah, so you'll have to, and we've looked at that and with house parents, administrative staff, the director, for example, you're looking at probably with this building, a max of 30. But that's a pretty good crew of kids.
Yeah, that is.
But it would be in stages, most likely. It would be so that we could start bringing in revenue, so that we take in and get the facility ready for, like, say, seven kids or how many we could, and then we would start bringing in funds. That way we, we could kind of build off of that, you know, bringing 30 to 20.
Step in the road.
Yeah.
Step in the road.
Exactly.
You're talking about the funds coming in, where's these funds coming from?
Well, part of it is from the state. What are they up to now? 100 and?
I don't, I don't deal with money piece. I just do regulations.
152, 157.
$53 a day per child, $55,000 a year per child.
That also, I just, I just want to say, it depends on their level of care. Each child has a different level of care depending on what they need. If you have somebody who's autistic, their level of care is going to be higher, so.
So if the state has part of that, then where does the rest of it, funding come from?
Do you write grants for the rest?
Are you, are you wanting to go into that now or is that, okay, you're getting a little ahead of, but the funding will come from three other sources, four possible. There will be, what's, as I've said previously, you've got to take this one step at a time.
Yeah.
The city's got to give tentative approval. You then have to set up 501(c)(3). Then you start worrying about the funding for this and you'll have different pots. You'll have a separate set of funding to remodel and renovate this facility phase-wise as you bring in, your first phase would be for a house parent, director, and seven kids minimum. Phase two would bring in another seven children. The cost of that, with my background, is about $70,000 to rent it. But you got to have the nonprofit set up, so if Jeannie Carson sends out emails to the alumni, they say, would you donate $10 a month or $1,000 one time? Gail McDonald says, sure, I'll do $10 a month. Where do you want me to send the money? Well, we don't know yet. So you got to have the nonprofits set up first, but you will have fundraising from the alumni, you'll have fun. It costs $10 to drive to Greensburg and get gas and come back. Surely you can afford $10 a month. If not, that's fine. So the community's going to support it with their fundraising ability. The alumni, I assure you will, either one-time gifts or monthly. I have a young lady who is in Wichita who is, her forte is grant writing, both for public as well as private. She knows all the large companies in the Wichita and surrounding area and has been great with that. I've got three gentlemen that have done a state plan. Now, for some of us who are more gray than any other color on top, we understand we're in the fall or winter of our life. And wouldn't it be nice to have a lasting legacy, not to ignore y'all back here, okay, to donate part of your estate? If you raise your kids well, they don't need your money. These kids are in need of help, so you donate 10% of your state, whatever that is, and that sets their in growth. So they're, the state will probably fund about 95% of the expenses once this is up and running. You figure 20 kids, a little over a million, about a million and two, 30 kids is going to run you about 1.6 million a year. If you can operate this facility, hiring excellent professional staff, can I say them, since we're talking about the money? You're going to spend 75, $100,000 a year for a director. To get a qualified director that's willing to come here, that's the kind of money you're looking at. You're looking at probably 35,000 a year minimum for a house parent and you got to have several of them. You're going to hire a cook, so you're going to have a half million distance salaries. So you're going to have, as a community, through the fundraising efforts, multiple, those monies need to be set in place before you hire the director. I wouldn't come to a job and they say, well, you know, we're, we're trying to raise the money for it, but we don't have it yet. The guy says, I have bills to pay. So you're going, we're going to have to have the fundraising kickoff before you get to the next step of doing your search for a good director. One of the beautiful things, Youth Horizons, while they will not be on your Board of Directors, will be in an advisory capacity and they have a wealth of resources providing a qualified And that's the first guy you probably want to hire after you do, or as you start the renovation, so that he's a part of the remodel renovation, so he can put his stamp of approval on what's being done. Just makes it so light with Veronica. She's going to be in it from the beginning so that we know it meets the state's approval and you don't have to back up to reduce something. So the funding will start as soon as the 501(c)(3) is established.
Jim, so you said that, I, I understand 501(c) and, you know, do all that. You said the state will fund up to 95% of this facility. Is that correct?
Once it's rolling and you have the staff on board and the children come and how, how, expedient their paychecks come, I don't, I can't tell you. Basically, the number is $153 a day per child.
From the state?
From the state.
Depending on if they need extra care or not, so probably greater for what you said, kids are a lot different.
That's a good handle, as related by Ernest Alexander Community Life, okay? And they are a YRC2 facility, so that level of care and whatever Veronica sends over here, it may vary on the funding depending on the weather, but yes, that will, that will accommodate about 95% of the budget, if not more.
From the money for the kids, they would be from the state?
And as Tammy said, or Paul, they've been in the black over the years.
That's, that's great. I'm just asking questions because.
Oh, yeah, well.
I don't know if it's the white option in the room, but, you know, we are talking about the money side of it.
Money is one of the important factors, trust me, I know.
But I would hate to see us get, try to get this started and it comes down to where the state isn't going to fund it. Because the first meeting I came to, you mentioned that the state wasn't going to really fund a whole lot to the program. And so that kind of threw a red flag up for me personally and that I kind of got that you would need people to donate. You brought up, you know, the $10 a month or your alumni donating. That's where I would like to know of how much responsibility is going to be on the taxpayers or?
Nonetheless.
None at none?
None at none. This will be a nonprofit and the, now, let's differentiate. Taxpayer against government, okay? Meaning, you know, the city's going to come in and impose another 1 cent sales tax to fund this operation, no. It is a nonprofit, there will be funding made available for the renovation, remodeling. The money will be there prior to the start of it. Same way with manual budget. I own two companies. I will tell you, 95% of all small businesses, their first mistake is they are undercapitalized. And Friday afternoon, when it's time to write paychecks and you've got 50,000 in receivables and 500 in the bank, hey, your employee don't care. He still wants a paycheck. So funding will be there for the first year. And then as this grows, then the state will reimburse accordingly. And Ernest has said that they've not had issues with that, okay? That they have, the state, and there are lockstep with the state as far as regulations and, and funding and that kind of stuff.
I have a question on the assignment of children and you mentioned autistic. If you had room for seven kids, do you have any choice of the level of care that you would send? So if we said we don't want special needs or we don't want almost 18-year-olds, we want the 13 to 16 or something like that?
Yes, you can say no to any child. To any child.
Do you want a cremation?
You don't have to take a child, it's just like a foster home. If you don't want to take boys, you don't have to take boys. It's just the way it is. I mean, why would you put that stress on your family or on a facility for something you know you can't handle? It's, that's just the way they do it with the foster care homes. If you can't take it, if you can't handle it, we're not going to give you those kids.
And if a child doesn't fit well into the community, can you say this child isn't fitting in to the community?
Yes, you can. There are some, there's a waiting period for it. You have to give like a, I think it's a seven-day notice.
Sure.
But, yeah, those, those regulations are put in place just for those reasons, so.
Jim, I have a question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the whole overall picture correctly because I'm also like a, I like to plan for worst-case scenario type deals. So let's say the city says, yes, you have the go-ahead, we're going to lease the building to this project and then we go into the, you get the 501(c)(3) status and then you go into fundraising mode and we, I'm assuming would have input from people to know what our golden dollar is before we open or hire whatever. Let's say we're fundraising and we don't make that goal and we decide, okay, this isn't viable. And with a 501(c)(3), is it like a Kickstarter thing where if we don't meet our goal, we decide not to do it because it's not getting where it needs to be? That money's going to... That money is then given back to donors, correct?
Yes.
So there wouldn't be as much risk? Like, I think some of the thoughts I've heard from people are, "I don't wanna donate money to this and then it never happens." And my money went nowhere. And also, "I don't wanna donate money to this," and then they just plow through and do it and fails and then my money went nowhere. But there would be a planning place, you're saying, to where we know when we open, we've got the money to cash flow it, we've got the money to renovate it. So that these donations are well invested. And then if it doesn't work and it fails, the money will go back to the donors.
Yes.
And it's, we try.
That's what you have a good accountant for, is to record all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Will the city remain here in the building?
Um, from what we've talked, possibly. Um, I believe what we've kinda talked about was we stay in the little office I'm at, we keep the council room. Um, obviously, we would want to keep our public bathroom down the hallway and then just kinda possibly go from there. I mean, if they don't use the entire building, but they only use three or four rooms and they only have fifteen kids and that's all they have, and we would be able to. Whether there's a divider put up somewhere, that's all kinda still possibilities.
Do you think that you could provide thirty kids aged thirteen through eighteen within the parameters of what they're talking about?
Easy.
Do you want more to use that?
Sorry, yes, yes, I think it could happen. I really do, there are that many foster kids that need that.
What I really think this is a step-and-bro project. You're not gonna be ready to take thirty kids all at once. But I think that eventually, if, if the community and folks understand this is your, this, this is gonna be your project, however much you wish to or wish not to participate, I can see this whole building being utilized for the group home. I can see the computer room and what used to be the home net room. So they're gonna have to rent that from the record department. I can see the basketball gym being utilized. You know, somebody asks, "Well, what are they gonna do in their spare time?" Idle hands, free mischief. We know that. You got a baseball diamond over here that's got a pile of whatever in the middle of it.
No, that's not.
The co-op owns it.
Yeah.
You're hot? The co-op owns it's. Who does? The co-op.
The elevator.
It's owned by the co-op. Well, it's still a baseball diamond, it used to be one, and out here we play one.
We don't own it, so we can't, you guys can't look at using that, just like the old football field is gone.
Okay, so you go talk to the co-op and say, "Hey, we wanna clean it up and you've got a bunch of kids and we'd like to have baseball over there," okay? They're not, they're not a foreign government.
No, they're not.
So you, you, you make those kind of accommodations for the, so that they got things to do. But I can very easily see consuming this as you progress this whole building. And if you wanna get aggressive, I can see you buying some of the land that used to be part of the baseball field or wherever and putting another home close by. Let your imagination be your limitation. What do you wanna do?
I have a question for you. Um, there were, there's been three meetings, this is the third one, there's been two other meetings, I missed the middle one. So the very first one, um, I asked several questions and, uh, Mr. Turner was unable to answer those, which I understand. So it's nice that you're here on this one. Can you tell me how these kids are placed in the facility? Um, when I asked Mr. Turner last time, he never gave me a direct answer, um, how they are actually placed in the facility. So I would like to know how these kids are, um, placed in our facility if we were open and ready to go.
Um, there is a care center in Kansas. Um, all of the placements come through there. And they call you, just like they call any foster home or any other facility, and ask you if you wanna take this child. They'll give you history if they have it, or, um, a referral that gives a little bit of information as to why they came into care. And you make the decision whether you wanna place that child in the facility or not. And that's all there is to it.
Okay. So they're not court-ordered any by here?
Oh, all of the children then will come here are court-ordered into state custody.
And that's not the answer I'm going.
They are all in state custody. If you are taking, um, if you contract with the state, every single child will be in state custody. You, if you decide you wanna take private placements, I won't be involved. That's just, you know, that's between you and whoever. But trying to get money from a private placement is, this is gonna be really difficult. Um, there just aren't a lot of them out here. I don't know what is on the other side of the state, but there's not a lot of private placements out here. So that's basically how it goes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. How do they deal with parent visitation? Is that our responsibility, are you getting these children?
No.
Parents for visitation?
The foster care agencies, um, each child, it depends on, most children are in, um, St. Francis Ministries. That's the, that's the agency. Almost all of the kids in Kansas are with St. Francis Ministries. Their worker, their case team will arrange the visitation. Um, and they will come and pick the child up and take them to wherever. They may make, they may talk to you and see about having the parents come out here and visit them. It just, it just depends on what's in the best interest of the child. That's probably do that.
Well, we have to worry if anything about security if the court takes the child away and the parent wants the child back, no matter what. Does anybody have that?
Law enforcement might have to answer that one.
Well, law enforcement has a lot of questions.
Well, before he starts, I have one more question. Can you tell me the difference between a foster home facility and a boys' home? I worked at a boys' home, so I know about a boys' home, but I don't know about how they operate or foster. Are they similar at all, or am I thinking, "No, this is totally different than these little angels." And I hate to be that way, but that's the word that we used at that first meeting.
I understand, I've been in foster care for a long time.
Sure.
Um, foster home, facility is a foster, it's a home, it's your home. Um, a youth facility is like this, it's like, um, Youthville when, in Dodge City before they closed down. It's the boys' and girls' home in Great Bend. That's a, that's a facility. Those both hold ten beds of seats. Those are my facilities that I currently cover. Um, this is, this is a bigger operation than what I've covered, so this is, this is all new to me. So I'm gonna be asking questions along the way too. So if you have a question I can't answer, I will find the answer for you.
I just would like to know the comparison. Because security is a big thing here, we are a small town, majority of our residents here are elderly.
Right.
And if it's, you know, if we, if they choose to put the older kids in here, how are we keeping them in this building? Because my past experience, they get out and I'm trying to protect our residents here.
Right, if, I mean, it depends on what kind of facility you want. If you wanna secure care facility, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing. I mean, that is locked on the doors and, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Not tender. And one of the little handouts, it was, it's kinda a whole lot to work. There is a part on there that kinda lists, family foster now, you know, it lists. So that might help with the little district. I think the, what we were looking at was at the residential center.
That'd be my next question, Nicole, is which one are you guys actually looking at?
I, I think it was, it was, I, I think we were, when we were looking it over, we're like, well, I guess we would be the residential care. Cause yes, you still want.
You will have a secure facility in the sense that if kids decide at ten o'clock at night, the women go out, there will be an alarm go off. Or if he opens back door, there will be an alarm go off and there will be a, uh, an adult caretaker, for lack of a better term, that will be awake and alert.
Are they supposed to go after them?
When I worked at the facility, I slept when they slept. So I don't know, that, I mean, these are questions that I'm gonna ask because we slept when they slept. We didn't, I mean, we didn't stay up twenty-four, we were there for twenty-four hours, but I didn't stay awake for twenty-four hours.
At, at
So they would be expected to stay up at night?
The Ranch and the YRC Center, they have someone that is up and awake twenty-four seven.
Okay, so they take shifts. My question for you is, were they, um, the only other word that popped in my head is juvenile delinquents.
They were.
Okay, what we are hoping, and I don't, I'm assuming we kinda have a little bit of pull on, is if they have a history with arrests and stuff like that, we have the, no, we don't want that.
That's what I'm like, that's what I'm thinking.
We are a family-based community, we are small and we wanna protect that. So no, we're not gonna want these kids that come in with violence. We don't want that.
And the difference is, if this was a state-operated facility and not a nonprofit, then you, the state would say you have no choice, you're gonna take the child. As a nonprofit, you have that choice. As she said, it's up to you to make that determination as to who comes here. But there's more than enough kids that will fall within the parameter of your qualifications that you don't have to take. The kid should be in juvenile detention. And there are those who will, will fall there.
Cause like where I worked, I worked at a juvenile treatment facility in detention. And you had to be awake, and if somebody did go out, you had to go after them. They don't do that. They don't go after the, no, I mean, you, you can, if you follow them. But to chase them down and go after them, that's law enforcement.
That's why you call the cops.
That's why you call law enforcement, you have a run, you call law enforcement. Sorry.
Just real quick, Nicole, did you say the residential center or secure residential treatment facility is what you guys are looking towards?
Residential center.
Okay, and when it says non-secure, that means no lock doors?
Well, that means with the bars on the walls, I mean, on the walls. On the windows. Uh, but yes, I, I do agree with, you know, we would have, of course, alarms on the windows, alarms on your doors. Cause you know that these kids aren't, they don't wanna be locked up. They don't wanna be stuck here. They wanna go home or they just wanna be done.
Yeah.
You know, so you will take precautions, but it won't be a lockdown facility.
Thank you very much.
There will be cameras now.
That helps protect.
Um, they are only at the residential center? Yeah. It's less, I mean, it's not like a Yeah, yeah, it's more family-oriented, yeah. So if qualified for that, they would make sure they got kids that have an application.
Well, I think like a
That's right, you are being loud.
Are there any more questions for Veronica?
I, I have a question. So we fostered teen girls for a little while. And to, to what you're saying, it, the residential center is like a home, so you can choose who you take and don't take. And at our home, we don't have to have an alarm system, but we can to protect ourselves and our child. Um, and, and a lot of teenagers run away. Cause they don't wanna be there, so the alarm is great. I was curious with, um, like I know it's, we're talking about boys, but is there statistically, are there just way more teen boys than teen girls? Did we go with boys over? I just ask, cause when our teen foster daughter ran, that night she was the sixteenth on a list of teen girls waiting to be placed that night if we didn't take her back. And so is the need for boys being placed higher than girls?
Not really, I think it's pretty much the same.
Is it equal?
I just think it's pretty much the same.
Okay.
Well, to address that, Ernest, who's got the four homes, Youth Horizon, has been donated eighty acres two miles down the road in which he is starting a similar girls' facility. You're not gonna put boys and girls of that age in the same building, uh, without?
Hutchinson has a facility that has boys and girls in it.
I
And it is completely separated, I've been in the home, it is awesome. I love the way they run their home.
I don't know that you can separate them here.
But I, I don't know, but you can.
I've heard a lot about different, these different boys' homes that are currently around Kansas, but when our first foster daughter came, she came from Newtman, Newtman was the only girls' home left in the western area, so we feeling that.
Well, to your point, the community, the community can make that, or the, the 501(c)(3) can say, "Hey, we want it to be for girls." Doesn't have to be for boys.
Yeah, you can make it whatever you want.
But I would not recommend in this building combining the two. I like that putting fire and gasoline in, you know, the same pot. You may decide that if this becomes successful, however you define that, that you wanna start a similar facility close by for the other group, because there is a tremendous need for it.
Okay, and some of the questions from the community is, where will the workforce come from? And that, um, we can have subordinate, have to hire people. They don't need people from the community, they can be trained, if, if they wish to, hire on as a director. Um, you know, there's skilled jobs that will have to be filled, whether they're within our community or not. You know, that's, that's what will happen. Is there any questions about that? Cause that was a community question.
Will we go through a security clearance? To make sure they're not, they're bound.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, you absolutely will. Everybody that works in a facility now has to be fingerprinting, so, yeah.
They get a DNA?
No.
They don't get a DNA?
No, you don't get DNA.
But they all have.
Now, now Ernest, uh, they had training from, uh, you've probably all heard of the boy home in Omaha. Um, and, and that, it was started, what, in the eighteen hundreds? And they have a really good sound program. And so a lot of his training was from, from that, that. And I think they have like a week training that they go to that's free, but, um, and, and it, it was sound like it's really thorough. Okay, how many jobs does this create? Well, then that will be on that work in progress. Um, cause we have to have somebody on staff all the time, so. Who pays for the cost of renovations? And I think you went over most of that. Um, who pays for the running of the youth facility? And there again, I think you've answered most of these. Um, does Mullenville really have housing for new families? That was a concern. If we, we brought in, uh, people to work here, um, is there going to be enough housing? Um, how does a group home help Mullenville grow? Well, I do know one thing. If we go for a water grant and it, it, it shows that our community is doing something very positive. Because the, the people at the state wanna hear those things. Our community does reach out and help each other in, in the other communities that we're not just civilized and, and we're not doing anything productive. And so that would help us with grants.
Can I inject there, and I hate to be spokesman, cause I'm really not what it would be. I have a nephew who just, he owned a machine shop, his apartment, sold it, built a new machine shop in Norwich, Kansas, set his nice machine. He operates twenty-four seven, he's got four shifts. And I wrote, I told him about what we were doing out here and he got, he wants to work in Norwich. There's a building right here that you could set a small machine shop up in. Be a laze, mills, whatever. There are people who I'm aware of and know personally, that will train. There are companies that will provide the operation, the, the equipment. This is not a warehouse facility. The kids need a profession. And so you apprentice them when they are, their aptitude is such to do so. As Paul or Tammy said, some of the kids at the ranch work part-time jobs. So they can learn to be a mill operator. And right now, the industry is, that industry, about every industry. I drove through Pratt, and there's more hiring signs all the way through Wichita, hiring. They gotta have a skill of some sort. How Alexander would probably be willing to take one or two kids if their interest in learning to drive a truck. Not bad income. So, it's an apprentice program for these kids as well. And so from that, I can see some small businesses being created just in response to that. I know you don't have any houses, you got a lot of empty lots. It'd be terrible if you had to build some houses, not million-dollar homes, but some decent houses to fill some of these empty lots you've got.
Are there any other questions, concerns?
Did you address where the kids are gonna go to school? Paul said it'd be kinda like the twenty-first Learning Centers, is the beginning of the school online? Or they're gonna go to the Cairo County?
It'd be both. It would, it, I mean, a lot of them aren't gonna, if you're eighteen years old and you've already been in private school, you don't start another school, probably not. So you're gonna, those ones will probably be with the Learning Center. Hopefully, there are some kids that would be able to go to Cairo County, possibly play sports, possibly get a scholarship somewhere to further their education, but it would be a mixture of...
And law enforcement, okay, do you have anything? Come on, that's your chance.
You know, I thought, I agree that there's a thing on, that there's a need for this in the state of Kansas. My experience with these kind of homes has not been good. Not so much for the home and what goes on in the home, but for the communities around them. Like we said, if they run, what do we do? We call law enforcement. Well, guys, if we keep getting people in here that run, guess what? We gotta hire more cops. Because they don't just run. They run to the neighbors and grab a car. Or they run to your house and grab whatever weapon they can. And that's from experience. I'm not just talking here. I've worked around these type of facilities for a long time. And, yeah, if we can decide who comes and who goes, that'll be great. Seven-day waiting period, what happens in that seven days? You know, what house do they break into? What kids do they go and beat up? And I'm not saying that it's gonna happen every time. What about once? You know, and, yeah, there's a need for it. But really, in reality, are we gonna get people from Satana? Are we gonna get people from Clark County, Comanche County? No. We're gonna get people from Wichita where they're overrun. We're gonna get people from Dodge City where they're overrun, Hayes, Garden City. It's not local kids, it's not the ones that we wanna help. Don't get me wrong, we wanna help them all, but we also have to help ourselves too.
To that point though, as, as said earlier, you can choose who comes here.
Who chooses?
The director will.
Okay, and how much information are they gonna get about the child and their family?
Well, it depends on if, what their, what their history is in foster care. If they've been in foster care for a long time, there's gonna be a lot of information. If they've just come into care, there's not gonna be much information, not much at all.
The Freedom Gates Boys Ranch in, in Hazelton, Kansas, I was, I was a part of when it opened. Um, I worked, uh, at the Barbara County Sheriff's Office. Uh, when that place opened up, I, I knew the people who ran it, I knew, I knew everything about it. Um, I was on the Hazelton City Council at the time. Um, we didn't have a say-so in if it came into the city or not. Um, I agree with, with Sheriff Tetter. Absolutely, we wanna help, we wanna help everybody we can. Um, unfortunately, we can't help everybody that we want to. When that facility opened up in Hazelton, um, you can check this by police records, because the danger happened, and it dan, and it happened to me. Two, three weeks after it opened up, I got in a car chase with one of the kids who stole the director's car, tore up probably a five thousand dollar, uh, five-wire fence, went through a plowed field, chased him through another field, and he finally made his way back around. Now, is that gonna be every time? Absolutely not, absolutely not. But I will, I will say this, and I don't mean any disrespect by it. I've heard this speech before, and I do know that there is a place and, a place for these and a time for these. With our agency, with one guy on, if something happens and we are clear on the east side of the county, it's gonna take us a little bit to get here. We'll get here as fast as we can. Our cars are running a hundred, a hundred and fifty miles an hour, but that only gets us here so fast. We gotta get here safely and as quickly as we can. We want to help out, but my experience with the Freedom Gates Ranch, Michael Simpson is the one who, who kinda runs it. Um, they got the name from Darwin Gates. Uh, Dennis Blake was, was, is a house parent and his wife. I know the people, it's not like I'm making this up. The town of Hazelton, we started getting, I'm, and I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you factual information. I'm not trying to, to put anything down. We had more drug cases, we had more break-ins, we had more, more stuff stolen out of cars. We had people walking into other people's houses. We had the kids running and hiding from us. I played hide-and-seek at least once a month, for, for a while. The kids that came there, they weren't bad kids, they were just having just a bad day. They, they just had a lot of bad days, and they needed someone to take them in and, and do them right. But those kids will put on, some of them, they'll put on a happy face and make you think that they are God's gift to, to foster, uh, facilities. And once they get there and they get influenced by a kid that maybe not be as upstanding, I hate saying that, they start doing stupid things. Um, I'm not saying all the kids were bad kids that were there. I dealt with some bad kids that came there. And Dennis and I believe it's Nancy, they had no idea. They, they had no idea who they were getting. You know, they were told, this kid needs placed here because his parents are on crack, and they don't take care of him. But he's a, he's a, he's a very loving kid. Oh, we forgot to tell you, he's gonna steal your van and run that fence and cause about ten grand worth of damage. Like I said, that was a one-time deal, but I do know, here in Mullenville, if you need law enforcement, it's going to take us a little bit to get here. It, it just is. I'm not saying I'm for or against this, I'm just, I'm just telling you the reality of what can and might happen. I would go over without a hitch, but I'm just saying. I was there for Freedom, uh, Gates Ranch.
And just, also no offense to add on to that, the problem that I see with the lack of placement, like we're gonna hit, out of our teen girls, one of them was quite a ride and tried to steal the neighbor's car, and it took two hours to find her, three...
Yeah.
It, and she had no history in the system and just needed a place to stay to go to school. But on the flip side, all of these kids currently are in offices or they're going to this home and running in this home and running in this home and running in this home and getting kicked out. And then when they become adults, you're still dealing with them anyways, but in amplified capacities. And so there's always gonna be risk with taking on kids, just like any of our own kids. Some of the things my classmates did that never even got in trouble for them, like, are just appalling. And so with any kids, you're gonna have people stealing things and vandalizing things, and it might increase with higher-risk kids, but then these higher-risk kids without stability or even a chance to have a normal childhood, just become adults that then cause the same or worse problems. Maybe not here, but maybe here. Um, one of the things that got us interested in fostering was from my job at the pharmacy and interacting with patients and adult patients, who I thought, how the heck did they end up like this as human beings? And then found out most of them had aged out of the foster system and bounced around for two years. And I thought, well, how do we stop this? Because now as adults, there's nothing anyone can do really to intervene or to help them learn how to pleasure or how to, what social skills or to keep a job, and now they're just living off the system and all of these things that none of us want. The best way, I think the most efficient way to target some of that and try to make a positive change would be to intervene for these specific kids at this stage in their life. Because the problem doesn't go away, it's just moved somewhere else. And then we're not immune to it here, because we go other places and other people come here. It just looks differently when they're adults.
Tammy, I could make the recommendation in response, and, and I don't disagree with what he's saying. We might inquire from Youth Horizons, their, uh, interdiction by the law enforcement as well as the Great Men Facility, and see what they're expecting. I know that Youth Horizon runs a pretty tight ship, okay, just from what I've experienced. To his point, and I think I shared this with you all, I got this grandson that just turned sixteen. And he goes to Wellington High School. And there was a fourteen-year-old kid that'd been in foster care for six years that convinced Zach that they ought to steal his buddy's SUV, and guess what? He wanted to go see, this fourteen-year-old wanted to go see his mother in South Texas. Now Zach is a good kid. But they wound up in Belton, Texas, crossed two state lines. And the, and the guardian parents had to pay, and I paid part of, had to drive down and bring the SUV, thank God there wasn't a wreck. Neither kid had a valid driver's license. So even good kids do stupid things. And this kid, and Zach's been in guardianship for the last, well, he's been in foster care and guardianship for the last four years. And who would ever, who would have done that? But somebody convinced him that he ought to, and so he did. No different than probably some of our own kids.
I guess that raises another question, do these other facilities hold any kind of liability insurance? So that, because like in a foster home, my understanding was if our girls ran off and caused damages, that we have to take care of that. But in a facility, there's no like, one responsible party? Is there liability insurance that covers incidents like that, where they steal the car and wreck it?
That's gonna be one of those, I'm gonna have to check and find, I have to check my record book and see if they're required to, but it sounds to me something like they would be required to. Do they, um, they have board of directors that they have to answer to, that that director has to answer to? So, there are, there are things put in place. Those bankers and, and those guys that are on that board of directors just don't even wanna play with that kinda stuff, so.
There will be heavily covered insurance for this facility and for anything that happens between kids, adults, kids and kid, there will be insurance to cover, whether the state doesn't cover for, uh, the kids. And that is not cheap, but that's part of the annual budget.
For how long? When you say that there will be, how long are you promising that there's gonna be coverage on that? Because I'm pretty sure liability insurance on this is not gonna be, um, very cheap to, um, to, I mean, to cover what Julie was suggesting, the damages. How long are you looking at? I mean, are you talking your, um, your group that is getting us started and getting the building ready?
It would be part of the annual budget.
Okay, okay.
So it's in the budget line, there is an insurance. Ernest right now pays forty-five thousand a year insurance for liability and coverage of that nature.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
So it's in the budget line. I, I have been privileged to see his annual budget, line item. So, I've got a pretty good feel, he doesn't share that with very many people.
Sure, sure. Well, it's not gonna be the same amount for him or somebody else, so.
Well, one, the first thing Tia said, and when he come out for the workshop, he said, oh, this is cinder block. He said, I wish I'd have built my houses out of cinder block, it'd be a lot cheaper in repairs.
He did say that, yeah.
What happened with you, Phil? Why did they close?
I don't know. I, I wasn't doing this job when they closed.
Another question, which I know would be decided on by whoever the board is that's running all these things, but from a curiosity standpoint, like you said, if someone runs, it's gonna take them a long time to police to get here. And then there is, if I'm the neighbor to this facility, I don't want some kid stealing my car. Naturally, you think, okay, then I should lock my car, because I know that someone could come steal it. But there is a big gap in education when it comes to the foster care system, misconceptions, things of that nature. Would, as far as like a privacy standpoint, would the facility be able to invite the community to join like an emergency text system where they could say, we have a runner? They wouldn't have to say who it is, but then people know, okay, did I lock my car? Not normally, but maybe I should lock my car. Does that breach any kind of privacy concerns?
Sort of like an Amber Alert.
Kind of like an Amber Alert, and then people can be watching, and hey, I think he's in my garage.
So you're not spending... Right, the community watch program, that's what we call it.
So, two steps, so you're not spending three hours wondering if your foster daughter...
The same texting technology that they want for the trash cans. Yes, yes. The same when they're gonna be there picking up your trash, it's the same one, yeah.
But I can't, I can see, well, that would be a very instrumental...
Uh-huh, yeah.
I just asked that because I think a lot of the concerns that people have can be addressed, but it's, like you said, it's phases, there's no, I mean, we don't wanna push through it if at the end, like, no, we don't want this because they're gonna steal my car. But you can't really have the board to address these issues without the five oh one C three and the funding. So I just raised the question to say, you know, is that an option? I think a lot of the concerns that we all have are things that can be addressed and should be asked so that whoever this board is can address them to make it work for everybody. So there's not this fear of community members thinking, we'll now have to lock everything always, because all these kids wanna do is steal my stuff and light my house on fire. But then you don't have kids running and no one cares and no one knows. And I think there's a good solution for problems, we just aren't there yet.
A couple of things to address that. Number one, one of the requirements for the state is video camera throughout, not in the bedrooms, but, or in the bathroom, but throughout the facility that work, okay?
Yeah, that is not true. Um, there is not a requirement, there, there is...
There will be though.
There is not a requirement for cameras. You can have a camera system, however, there are no cameras in the bedrooms and no cameras in the bathrooms.
Yeah.
But it is not a requirement.
I thought it was.
Nope.
Youth Horizons has that.
There will be, and I understand there will be some, a week. These kids are gonna be pretty closely, it's not a lockdown per se. Number one, the kids aren't gonna be too radical, but as I say with my grandson, you never can tell. Who would've ever thought he would've done such a stupid thing? But he did, and he, they, thank God the law enforcement didn't crack down on him. He couldn't get the patient some severe jail time. But it's gonna be pretty well closely monitored and supervised at twenty-four seven.
The cameras are basically, Youth Horizons has, to protect the child and, and the people, the staff that are there. And that way, if something does happen, they review the staff's reaction, what happened, what they did, da-da-da-da, what the kid did, and so it's for everybody's protection.
Right, as far as your question about the, like, the community, um, watch program that you were talking about, if there is a regulation in the states you can't have something like that, there are things like exceptions that you can do to get something like that. And I would, for this community, I would recommend an exception for something to, to a regulation like that, just so you all feel more safe, so.
There's the red alert that goes out on our phones for weather. But we have such an elderly population that the majority of them might get it on their landline, and it means they get up in the middle of the night, stumble around, get their phone.
Well, what I was just saying is like, the concern is the kids are gonna run into each personal property. And so if I'm a homeowner and I'm concerned, I could elect to be on this list. And so if I want to be woken up at 2:00 AM because some kid might be breaking into my car, and I don't normally lock my car, but I'm gonna go check, then I have the option to feel secure in that. That it's not just, oh, no, I'm stuck with this. You have a little interaction.
I mean, I under, I understand what you're saying. Because I leave the keys in my car hoping somebody will take it.
Well, there you are.
That's it, they'll tell you, if my gas cage doesn't work, my pedometer doesn't work. If nothing works, it doesn't leave town. So if somebody wants to take it, please do. I mean, but that, that is the situation in our community, that we do have an older population that don't have cell phones, that don't, it wouldn't, I mean, it would take something different or, or something somehow. And unfortunately, they, we just keep getting older, including me.
And to add on what Hannah's saying, as I look around the room to see the actual residents that would be affected, there's about thirteen of us and probably over half of them wouldn't respond on that. So I'm not sure that would be a good thing because, you know, Julie, I appreciate that you might wanna be on there, but if they come to my house to steal my car, are you gonna drive over here to try to help us or locate this person before they stole my car? I don't know how much outreach, because we're so far on this side of the county. It'd be different if we were centrally located. But I don't know if a watch program would be very beneficial for the community because we are elderly-based community.
Well, and I just meant it as a compromise because my personal thought is if I leave my car unlocked and my keys in my car and someone takes my car, whether it's a foster kid or someone off the highway.
Absolutely.
That's my fault.
Yeah.
And so with this facility, I understand the concerns of someone might come in and damage my property or take something or whatever. But if I don't lock the door to my house and they just walk in, yeah, they did it, but anyone else coming in too, and that's still on me. And so for people who don't wanna change their lifestyle currently, and they don't want to have to lock things and don't wanna have to change because this is going in, it's not to say we couldn't offer some kind of compromise to say, if you're really concerned about this, here's a solution. That way you're notified that something could happen because we have someone running. That's all, I, I didn't mention it, like, let's solve the problem now.
No, 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 no. I'm just kidding, I think it's great, I just don't know if it would work here. Because I'm pretty sure most of the people here, and I'm one of them, we're in bed by nine o'clock. My phone's, you know, I, I'm not gonna respond. I do get Amber Alerts, I get the weather, I miss it because I'm in bed.
It just doesn't satisfy the sake. To kind of ease some fear, like, it's not like people would be stuck with this and just don't want to do anything while they unlock their cars and homes. Like, there could be some dialogue and some problem solving. Maybe there's a call tree, and so you're, maybe you're on the text list and you get the text, and so you know the five people you're gonna call.
Absolutely, I like that idea, it would be better than just a melody.
But just to say, like, I understand there's fears and there are risks. But there's also, if people are willing to say, okay, yeah, it's my responsibility to lock my car, but I don't want to, there might be some compromise to make it work to where it's a positive thing for the people with the fears and the risks coming in, so they can coexist a little better.
Sure.
Do you get Amber Alerts?
Maybe.
Oh, you'll know it on your cell phone. Yeah, and you won't, two o'clock in the morning, you'll know it's an Amber Alert because it blows your phone up.
One thing about this facility, like Youth Horizons, they keep these kids pretty busy. They have, they have chores. I ask the kids, I say, you have to vacuum, you have to help with the dishes, you have to, and they all say, yeah, there were certain things they had to do. And they also work off of a, a system of points that when they do things good and they react good. I think you have my book, my social skills, they have to follow certain social skills. A lot of these kids don't have those skills, and they have to address them with the, the director just a certain way, otherwise they get points off if they direct, you know, if they, they answer the correct way, then they get more points. And with the added points, they get privileges. And if they don't get those privileges, and we got there, they were playing game station. They had two of them going, and the kids were having a good time. And, and so, you know, that's, they had earned that ride though. So, you know, there, there is a lot of structure. The kids aren't just running around doing what they want. That when they leave the building, they have to, most generally, they have some chore they're having to do. They're expected to come back, you know, even in their homes, that there's, there's certain things they have to follow.
Well, I just wanted to add, you know, I was not the last meeting, like I said, I was at the very first one, so there were a lot of information that was thrown, a lot of unknowns. So I personally invited Sheriff Tetter and Sergeant Rugg because they had experience in it. Hopefully they didn't scare you guys, but I don't want you to be close-minded minded because that could happen here. So please take that in consideration of what could happen. So hopefully they didn't scare you guys, because it doesn't mean that's what's gonna happen here. But I wanted you guys to know that it does happen in facilities and that Mr. Rugg had actual experience in it. So I asked him to be here to talk to you guys about that. So take it in consideration, whoever's putting the board together to decide on what kind of facility we're taking, what kind of kids you guys are gonna bring, bring into it. Please, 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 please have the sheriff involved in those discussions because he is our security that we will need. So please take that under consideration. Thanks Julie has brought up, could happen in any one of these three communities anyway. I have known people, kids from a home, that you didn't think that they were gonna take the neighbor's car and go joyriding. But I bet you can think back over the years that there have been kids like that. Not to name any names, but that's happened. And maybe one of these adults will look and say, yeah, I'm down there.
No, I didn't mean to.
You're not bringing him. Maybe you're increasing the number by bringing, starting with seven or something, increasing the possibility, that possibility of him having to chase out somebody or chasing down a kid, running around, driving somebody's tractor where they're not supposed to, or things like that, has already happened. So I, your point that you brought up earlier, trying to change the way of some kids, is just the whole mindset that all of us have been involved with in the circles. You get the kids, but why not get the parents on board to have a budget and get out of that low income, that scenario? The same with this. Maybe they get into a fine facility and think, I'm not going to be a parent that my kids will end up in social services. That spiral continues, is right. In someplace along the way, we hope we break that cycle of kids, and we wouldn't have to take the eighteen-year-old or even the sixteen. Maybe we should take them twelve to fifteen, not that they wouldn't run too. And not that they wouldn't start a fire, hit matches, and start it down by the railroad track. These things have happened. You just probably would be more supervised than in their own home many a time. So, you know, there's pros and cons to anything.
Two things to that point. Youth Horizon's mission statement is break the cycle.
Yeah, which is the cycle of this.
Break the cycle.
Circle's idea too.
The other thing is, y'all may decide, hey, we wanna hire a security guard. That's up to you. You may decide that, you know, during the evening hours when something like this was making you feel that you need extra security, you may decide that you wanna hire a security guard. Who knows? That's up to you. Because, you know, the intent is not to put the community at risk at all, any more than any other teenager might, you know.
A community that has two highways that are major drug carriers through the state.
There he goes, mm-hmm.
Two why?
Two highways, long through town, that are major drug carriers through the state.
And such traffickers.
Yeah, four hundred is marijuana and fifty-four is cocaine, heroin, meth.
Well, but these kids aren't gonna be out, running around the streets. They're gonna be busy, they're, they're gonna be supervised. They're not gonna be allowed out, running around without supervision.
You know, I think, I think everybody here is missing the point completely. We're not running a detention place where bad kids are coming. That's not what we're doing. We want to have a safe home for children that need to be loved, to be taught and taken care of because their parents have failed them. These kids are not coming because they're bad, because they robbed a bank or they stole a car or whatever. They're coming here so that we can love them, teach them, and help them to be better adults. So to sit here and just keep talking about being afraid because these kids are gonna come steal my whatever, we need to be thinking a more positive way of how we can help these children be better adults and to help our community as well by just doing things, you know? Somebody might be, one of you farmers might need a fence built or something. You can call the school or the facility saying, I need some fence built. Can you, can you spare a couple of kids? You know, or something like that? We've got some, every one of us probably in here have got something we can teach these kids.
Well, that's where the community needs to be involved.
Okay, Hannah, for you for instance, you guys can help them build a garden so it'll help feed them. And they can go out and, and learn how to do these things on their own, and...
We have a thirty-five-foot greenhouse ready for us to go get donated, brand new.
Right.
All we gotta do is go get it. So you've got a greenhouse for year-round as well as a garden.
We are not a bunch of hillbillies in this town, small, I mean, we all have things that we know how to do and can do well, whether it be sowing or cooking or farming or whatever, you know? It doesn't have to be a negative thing. So I think you just all kind of need to start thinking a little more positively instead of being so negative.
Well, I have a question to piggyback off of that. Is the plan for this facility to be integrated within the community and for there to be community involvement within the facility? Or are we talking about like an outside housing facility that would be staffed by people that are coming to Mullenville that we don't know that? I mean, I don't live in Mullenville, I live in Greensburg, just for clarification. But I, I just, I just wanna make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Are we talking about a home for kids that need a home? Or are we talking about a housing facility that's going to be staffed? Is there a big difference? Sorry.
Well, to answer that, to be employed here as a house parent or to be a director, the board of directors will have to hire those individuals, and they have to be qualified. If there's someone local that is qualified, they certainly should be considered. A cook, there may be someone local that says, you know, it may not be a full-time job, or it may be. And there's someone local that says, I'd like that job, please, and apply. So it's back to how much involvement do you wanna have?
It would be a mixture of both. It would be a mixture of both. Yes, you're gonna stack it, but yes, you want community input, involvement. It doesn't mean just Mullenville. That means countywide, that means Dodge, that means Pratt. Whatever we can come up with, or not we, the board, and I do not mean city council, I mean the board that somebody just puts together. They would say, okay, you know what? Let's go find some people from Kinsley, let's go find people from Havlin, and just bring them in. And hopefully that, that can teach these kids and get them going.
There'll, there'll be training available for those that are interested in jobs. And in Youth Horizons, they have some wonderful training. And they, so we can use them as a reference to get that going. So the people that are interested in working, I'm sure with training and all, you know, of course you have to go through all the long background check and all, but yeah, it's gonna be above, so.
My facility's in Great Bend. My boys' home had a different director last year than they have now. That place was a disaster. It was, I'm not even gonna, I was there every other week on a complaint because that director just did not know what she was doing. We got a new director in there, and I have to go visit, just see what's going on. But nobody's called me because there's been a complaint out there. So it's just, they've, they've changed some things in the house, they painted, they put up posters, they made it more homey, and the place is just golden right now. I'm just so proud of them. So it's, it's, it's a facility, but it's also a home. There's a home-like environment there, and they do, and I, I tried to get one of the foster parents out of Great Bend who likes to cook, but she's an older woman and can't take care of the foster kids as much anymore. So I talked to her about volunteering at the boys' home to cook meals for them and, you know, let the boys come help. I volunteer. I teach a crochet class, and so I volunteer in a group home. It's, everybody is involved. If you have a skill and you wanna teach it and you think it will be beneficial, you don't have to wait for somebody to come and ask you. If you wanna be involved in it, but you're not gonna be a staff member or a director, you can still be involved and make it a home-like environment for them, which is what they need.
Yes. I, I like what Dr. Seuss says. If someone like you doesn't care enough about law, nothing's gonna get better, it's not. We have an opportunity to do something and make it better. You can put me on that list, by the way. Opportunity for anybody in the county. They don't, it's all right if they drive over from Havlin or Coldwater or whatever, because it's a job. We don't have that many openings that they could come. We live in a world where people travel, thirty minutes minimum sometimes to go to work. It's, it's, that's not a big deal.
Unless it's five o'clock in the evening in Wichita coming out here. Coming out here, I was like, more time getting out of Wichita than it was a three-lane parking lot for two miles. So I drive, I drive, in my work, I drive all over the city, but I drive eighteen miles east way to go to work and think nothing. You know, so that's like one of them here to Havlin. But wouldn't it be nice if you needed to build a couple of more houses, fill up some of your empty lots? When I was here in high school, we had five hundred built in Mullenville. You're half that size now. I'll tell you, if you don't do something, and I'm talking about needs, and that's where it struck me is you can, I can, I can see helping the need of Mullenville to sustain itself. I drove by Cullison and Wellsford. In the fifties, they were viable communities. They had a high school. Today, they do have a cotton gin over at Wellsford, I think.
Cullison.
Cullison, one of the other. There's nothing there, folks. In twenty years, twenty-five, if you do nothing to change your perspective, drive over that way and see what Mullenville's gonna look like. Because I can tell you, you already shrunk half when I was here.
Is there any other questions or concerns?
You guys, I'm sure you guys have spent your bedtime.
Thank you for all coming out. I think we had some good discussions, and there's not gonna be any decisions made anytime soon. This is an ongoing process. I think a lot of you are paired in possible solutions. Just keep talking to, talking amongst yourselves, talking to council members. And as we stated, the, the board is gonna have to come from somewhere. The city's not gonna be involved with this. So if there is a group that wants to do this, they're gonna have to step up and put this board together or we'll, we'll be done anyway, so. If there, if, it's gotta be somebody from the community. And when I say community, I'm not just saying Mullenville, I'm saying Iowa County because this is gonna be something bigger than Mullenville. But if there's not the, the people with the passion to put this together and drive, it's not gonna happen either, so. But the only decision the city is gonna have is whether we lease the facility to them or not. That's the only decision. But the, the only decision the city is gonna have is whether we lease the facility to them or not, that's the only decision.
Have you seen any kind of a sample lease, or do you know, help anything about what that's gonna do?
No, that's, we haven't got that far into it yet, we just, because if there's no interest, we're not gonna waste any time on that at this point, uh, we just wanna see if the interest's there, and if they wanna go forward, or if there's the group that wants to put this together, so.
At this point, if you have the 501, do all of that, and can't come up with a satisfactory lease for the city of Mullenville, it still can't happen.
Yeah, correct.
How long are you gonna pursue the interest of this thing, I mean, you know, if nothing happens in six months, is it dead, or dead in a month? How long are you gonna keep putting time towards it?
Uh, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the council, probably at our next meeting, that'll be the, the next discussion in, in, in June, uh, how much further we're gonna pursue this. If we get people calling to say we wanna put the board together, we wanna move forward, then we'll have to figure out a way to gauge the community's desire for it. We don't know how we're going to do that, we possibly put a question on the election ballot in, uh, in November? Pa, yeah, possibly, that is how we're gonna get the input from the, the community, to decide if the community is wanting us to pursue this, so if there's.
So you're saying you're going to elect sometime then?
Yeah, could be, could be, could be, if there's no, in the next month or two, nobody steps up, well, we're, we're looking, we get, we got people that wanna do this board and put this together, yeah, we'll, we'll go further. If there's not, we're, we're gonna be done.
So do you all know where the C-hole is? I'm right down here, my hours are on the door, put a note in the Dropbox if you're for it, if you're not, if, if you guys don't wanna drag it out till November, let me know, let your council members know, let your mayor know. Because this is why we're having these, to get your input. So if I send you guys something in the mail, send it back, don't just throw it in the trash, because that's how we're trying to get your input, that's my one thing.
We started this process, I come out in August of last year, okay, to broach the idea. So it's not a weekend venture.
So thanks again for everybody coming out, and enjoy the rest of your evening.